Welcome everyone to the June 28 City Council Work Session. A beautiful sunny day in Eugene. Welcome to everyone here and at home. The first item up this evening is committee reports and items of interest. And I haven't really made myself a list, except I know that we're heading into one of the biggest weekends of the summer here. We have Arts in the Vineyard this weekend. We have Butte to Butte on Monday. We have, I get to lead the First Friday Art Walk on Friday. So there's lots of wonderful things going on in the city. Mike, what would you like to offer?
Thank you, Mayor. Betty and I continue our work to meet biweekly with the auditor for supervising that office. We did that on the 15th. We'll do that again tomorrow.
I don't think so.
Not a lot else on here. Enjoyed our joint elected officials meeting the other day. I'm looking forward to what comes of that. I thought there were a number of interesting topics raised. I'll look for the county's responses on some of those. Thank you, that's all.
Alan?
Not a whole lot either. The Bock Festival also going on.
Oh yeah, the Bock Festival.
Yeah, Mayor goes to Bobby McFerrin on Monday. So it'll be fun. Not a whole lot else going on. It's summer finally.
Yeah.
That was because the council took the motion.
Passed the motion, right?
Passed the motion. Created summer.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we did.
Is that what you guys did when I was gone?
Yeah, before you got there.
No, before you left, remember, we talked about that that night.
You get zero credit.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness. Okay, great.
You're up.
Okay, hi, thank you. So I was going to, tomorrow night, Tuesday evening, I was looking for the email to remind folks, I know Mayor, I don't know if you've gotten an invitation from the Willamette High School, Nurse Anna Marie, we're doing an open house on the health center there, and I think that you're all invited and you're more than welcome to come. I'll be talking a little bit about the needs of why we're approaching doing a health center in Bethel once again. I was in Denver for four days. I was at the Naleo Conference, which is a National Association of Latino Elected Officials. It was attended by over 500 people.
Nice.
And we had some really top-notch speakers. We had Secretary of Department of Homeland Security, and I can't, I was looking for her name, I can't remember.
Napolitano.
Napolitano, that's how you say it. And she was an awesome speaker, and she spoke very much from the heart and has a lot of compassion for people and is really looking to try and encourage her and President Obama, she believes, has a desire to do immigration reform. And so that was very well met with the Latino leaders, as you would probably well imagine. And then there was an outbreak, an outbreak, a discussion, a discussion on House Bill in Arizona, 1070, which is the anti-immigration legislation that they've passed. And there was a lot of conversation about really what is, what is the appropriate response for organizations outside of Arizona. And there was some really compelling stories from the people who work in Arizona and represent their local constituencies and school board members about the issues. So that was really, really fruitful for me, because, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking about, you know, what can we do to be punitive? And then the reality is that the people are the ones that are suffering the punitivity of the outcome of whatever it is that we, I just made it up. I did, I did.
That's a good word. I like that. That's creativity.
And so that was very well. And I got to go to Red Rocks Amphitheater, which is very beautiful, Mile High Stadium, met some really nice ladies from Chicago, schools, board members there. And I guess that's all I have right now.
Great.
Great. Just a couple of things. The JEO meeting, I was going to also mention, I was intrigued by that. I was glad to see the turnout and, for the most part, the unanimity of perspective, which is good. Also, the El Cog met in Florence this month and are continuing on with their effort to create some local initiatives around human services, communication, and economic development, which is good. I mean, it'll be the first time that El Cog has really worked to try to create some actions as opposed to just meeting and talking and deliberating. And everybody's really excited about that, so that was, that was very good. So that was a good meeting, moved the ball a little bit further down the court. So I'll keep reporting back as we go. And that's all I have.
George?
Well, first, I'd like to remind people that tomorrow night, from 5:00 to 6:00, at the Albertsons on Coburg Road, the Mayor and I will be there doing our one-on-one. So anybody has anything they want to bring up to the Mayor or my attention, please feel free to stop by. I'm glad to see that the safety first weekend was a success, again, as usual. They did a great job out there at Alton Baker Park with that. And I'm going to be away for probably about two weeks, starting July 14th, which is sad because that's the day we're scheduled to do our first work session on our street assessment policy. And I was on the Subcommittee with Jennifer and Betty, but I'm going to be doing, having a shoulder replaced that same day. So probably be off work for, from here anyway, for a couple of weeks. As soon as I'm able, I'll be at home taking the meetings by phone. But I'll still be able to answer the phone and do emails. Might take a little longer.
One hand.
Yeah. Type slower.
So if you don't see me at the table for a while, that's where I'm going to be, is at home.
Thank you, George. George?
Thanks. On Friday, I went to Community Alliance, Lane County's open house on Blair, and they rededicated, they renamed their building and it's dedicated to, it's now known as the Leslie Rockwell Bank Peace and Justice Center. And it was a great crowd, really good music, very well attended. And it was also part of the, my old neighborhood was just hopping, it was part of the last Friday Art Walk in Whittaker. And it was, the weather was great, it was just, there were people out all over the place. It was really a lot of fun. And then Sunday, my old neighborhood, Jefferson West Side, who was the 2010 Neighborhood of the Year, had their picnic.
Right after you left.
Right after I left, that's true. Anyway, they had a picnic at Monroe Park, and that was a lot of fun. It was also very well attended. And the Garden Weasels provided the music, so that was good.
Good stuff happening, huh? Betty?
I almost dumped a glass. Thanks. First, the Crest neighborhood had a garden party to introduce this beautiful book with interviews. It's a history of the neighborhood, and you all may look at it if you want to. It's really beautiful. It's interesting, one of the things they were discussing, these, some of the people have lived there for a very long time. And many years ago, they were worried about bus schedules being dropped. And they were also talking about streetcars and some of the same problems we have now. But I learned that they have a, that they used to have a community club up high on Crest, and they were advertising the meetings and potlucks and membership, I think, I think it was 25 cents or something like that. But it's a really good job that they did, the neighbors interviewing the residents. And it has a lot of the history of that part of town. And the names you'll find in here are some of the leading citizens of Eugene. So I think it's a very interesting book. They're for sale for $10 if anybody wants to buy them, and you may look at it if you want to. I've read in the paper that we still have $10 million in the Parks Fund, the Parks Bond.
Okay.
Is that right?
I'll have to check for sure.
I asked you before, and you didn't know for sure, but that's what I read in the newspaper, so it must be true.
Must be right.
Of course, it has to be true. So, but, and it was in connection with Musumichi's property, in that article. I do not think it's a good idea for us to help Musumichi out by spending that money. But I think it's the most important thing we should do, still should do. We're going to talk about water tonight. For the water supply, we should buy the Amazon Headwaters property that drains into Amazon Creek, which drains into the Long Tom, which drains into the Willamette, which is not where we get our water, but some people do. And we might someday too, who knows? But I think that protecting the water is really important. And I hope we can spend some of the money for that. About the walnut mode, which we're not, node, which we're not talking about tonight, the walnut mixed-use center. I'm really concerned about people who are worried about the parking. And I hope that we will have some options when we take action for different things we can do for the parking, especially the veterinarian who is there, who will probably lose her business if, if there's, because of the parking situation. And they still don't let dogs ride buses, so even if they live on bus routes, they can't take their dogs to the vet by bus. And also, I got, you all got the communication today from Jeff Nelson, which has some good points that I think we should consider. And I hope we're still considering possible changes. That's all, thank you.
I forgot one more thing. I had the privilege of going to Chief Murphy's retirement party. After 32 years at the city of Springfield, as a volunteer and a firefighter working his way up through the ranks, Chief Murphy finally retired. And it was, I just wanted to thank him for the service to the community all those years and being safe and creating a, and he's one of the fathers of fire med and lifelight and a whole bunch of things that'll be his legacy for forever. And so it was a great event. It was at the Armory down in Springfield, and a great turnout, and I wish the best of luck to the chief. And on Wednesday, I'll be tuning in by phone. I'll be out there.
Thanks for that. City Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Apparently, we shouldn't welcome a new laptop to the table, too.
No, this is just to put that in.
Giant phone. Oh, okay.
She's not going to check them.
Yeah, it's all on this side of the table here, I noticed.
I'm putting it on.
I think it's good.
Don't care. Pick on me.
A couple of things. One, tomorrow morning, I'll be joining neighborhood leader from the River Road and Santa Clara area on a tour out there in those neighborhoods, so we'll be out there. The follow-up on Springfield Chief, beginning the 1st, Chief Groves will actually be dual-hatted as acting chief with Springfield also. So we're entering sort of an interesting time, but I think it's going to work out just great. Tomorrow, the media event with the Bean Project Downtown, and this is just, I think, another opportunity to see the vitality and things that are going on in the downtown, which is tremendous. Summer in the City starts on Wednesday, every Wednesday at 6:00. Starting Wednesday, this Wednesday at 6:00, Sat and Love will be.
I thought it was last Wednesday.
Downtown. Yeah, Sat and Love will be on Wednesday.
And so I would encourage people to come out for that. I think the weather will be terrific. And then also on the 15th, I'll be with the Willamute Natural Area, their citizens group and at their meeting on that evening, so.
Great. So thanks for mentioning the Bean Press Event. It's at 1:30, right, on tomorrow?
Yes, it is.
So there you know, so you'll know. Come and enjoy it and celebrate it. I wanted to add that the, there's an HIV Alliance press conference tomorrow, and it's about a proclamation in support of National HIV Testing Day and a demonstration on the ease of taking oral HIV test. And then George mentioned the one-on-one at 5:00 at Albertsons on Coburg Road, where we would welcome anyone coming to visit and talk with us about issues on, let's see, there's this reception for HUDD and EPA and National Department of Transportation all in Salem on Wednesday. I'm going to go to that to represent us. I don't know if you're, are you going to go to that, Chris?
No.
Okay. And there's also the airport runway celebration happening on Friday at 10:00, where there'll be something else to celebrate. And then there is, just one other thing I want to mention, another good thing happening in Eugene on Saturday, we're going to be hosting a street parade and opening ceremony in downtown Eugene for the Pan American Masters Basketball Championship. So that's happening at 10:00 by the Fifth Street Market on Saturday. So there's just something going on about every hour for the, from now until, I don't know when, but it's all good. That's great. Thank you all. And so now we'll head into our work session, and it's on the Eugene Water and Electric Board, sale of water to Veneta. And we have a lot of time allocated for that. We may not need that amount of time, because we're going to talk about where we want to move from here, and I'll look into the City Manager to introduce the topic.
Thank you, Mayor. And Brenda will give just a couple of quick comments, but we wanted to reserve the time for the council if you had any particular questions or comments as we go forward, so.
Thank you, John. For the record, Brenda Wilson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager. We've presented this issue to you a couple of times now, so I'm going to be very brief and just bring you up to date as to where we are and how we got to this evening. As you know, on May 12th, you were first presented with the issue on the proposed sale of water to Veneta by E-Web. They had filed the contract for validation in the court. You were presented with this issue on that day, and a lot of questions were raised during that work session. A lot of questions on not only the proposed sale, but water rights in general, E-Web's plans for certifying the third water right, many questions. And you directed staff to schedule a joint meeting with the E-Web Board, to schedule a public forum to provide information to the public, and to schedule a public hearing. We have done those things. And at the public hearing, you received public testimony from several people. And after that public hearing was held, we held the record open to receive additional public testimony. We received public testimony from Jan Wilson of the Western Environmental Law Center, and that's attached to your AIS. She also submitted a copy of the motion to intervene with her testimony. We also received testimony from E-Web's and a very short memo from Sean Bowles, Howie Bonnet, and Dave Funk, which is also attached to the AIS. After the AIS packet went out, we received an additional email. I believe that you probably also received that email from Howard Bonnet, and I've provided a copy of that at your places. Also during that time, E-Web filed for a 30-day extension to provide additional time to intervene in the validation process. That time is, was extended until June 30th, which as you know, is day after tomorrow. So we have that going on. Also during that time, the city of Veneta received its funding package from Rural Development Service. And they have been looking at their options. The package that they received from Rural Development Service was not the best package. I think it was not what was expected, but it is funding available for this project, and they are looking at their options with that project. So that's how we got to this evening. And I know we continue to receive questions from you and compile those all into one document. And I've also provided that document to you as an attachment. It is a living document, as more questions keep being added and answered. And with that, I'll open it up to discussion and be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Before you do that, City Manager, did you want to make any comments about your recommendation?
Yeah, my recommendation is that you direct us to intervene into the process and that we resolve the charter authority question first before we come back and consider the contract with Veneta itself. Couple thoughts. My understanding is E-Web anticipated this when they first entered into their contract with Veneta. You might remember a little bit of how that unfolded. They entered into the contract, we had some decisions to make, or you have some decisions to make. At the time, we, on the staff side, suggested one of those options could be to approve the contract through resolution, and then either intervene or not intervene. Early on, I don't think E-Web had that in mind. And so I think their timeline, my understanding, would have anticipated something like that. I recognize that that could have some repercussions for Veneta as they try to work through their funding issues, and so that's something they'll have to continue to work through. But, so the recommendation that I'm bringing forward is that we, we do resolve the charter authority issue. That is a critical issue. It's an important issue that we need to do. And I know several council members before I talked about a desire not to continually kick the can down the road on this one. And then as that gets decided, that provides some additional time for questions to be asked and answered about the water issues themselves. And then the council can consider the contract issues with Veneta as it plays itself out in the, depending on the charter authority question. The other reason why I think it might be appropriate to move it in this direction is, as you know, we're engaged in the Envision Eugene process. And that Envision Eugene process, there'll be several discussions around how we as a community want to grow and putting a lot of thought into that. Some of that may or may not inform the discussion, but as we move forward with Veneta questions, but it is an opportunity to have those kinds of discussions before we resolve this particular issue. So that's why you see the motion you have in front of you.
Thank you. Yes, Glenn?
I could add one thing, Mayor. The City Manager's recommendation is also consistent with at least the basis of what E-Web is asking you to do tonight. Page 21 of your agenda item packet is E-Web's testimony. And at the very bottom of that page, E-Web does request that, in a sense, you not act in a way that would preclude the court from deciding this question. So E-Web also is hoping that whatever action you take is one that would allow the court to decide the charter question that would be consistent with the City Manager's recommendation.
Thank you for that. I wanted to take note, and I got it in my packet. I was out of town for the weekend, and I just read it. And it was, and I thought you all got it, but I haven't heard that you did, so maybe you didn't. But a former city planner, Jim Croce, wrote, did you get that in your packet? He wrote a message to us about sort of the history of the water rights issue here in terms of E-Web's history and their desire for being able to supply water at other times during the history of the city, to give us that information, and his opinions on that. So I just want to be sure that's, that you have that and that you're aware of that. And I'm of the mind that we should settle the authority issue. It just seems reasonable to know what that authority is. And I'm hoping that if that is what happens, and you support that, that that'll give time for Veneta and some of the environmental interests to meet, have us do our Envision Eugene, really have a better understanding about both the environmental impacts of E-Web's provision of that water, or not providing that water, or what the other alternatives are and which has the greatest impact. So it just, I think it gives time for more information and more time for people to work together and hopefully find a way forward that will be suitable. I've got Chris in the queue. I've got George Poling in the queue. I've got Mike in the queue. I've got George Brown in the queue. I've got Andrea in the queue. Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate the work that's been done on this, and I appreciate the City Manager's proposal. It's really what I would expect in the best interest of Eugene. To me, there are three fundamental issues that we're swirling around, and we want to make sure we keep them understandable and distinct. The first one is the issue of authority. Who gets to sell what? And what is the authority to grant that privilege? The second one is the water right, which we've had a lot of conversation around. What does it take? How do we perfect the water rights? Do we even want to? The third issue then is, should Eugene, whoever has the authority, agree to a contract to sell water to Veneta? My inclination is to say, do we need to carry all three of those forward? Or could we resolve one of those, or possibly two of those, and carry the most important issues to where they need to go? So the question I have is, if we were to go ahead and grant through a city resolution the authority to sell the water, does that impede or block us from continuing to resolve the authority question later on?
In my view, yes. If I were the judge and the city council approved the water sale, then as a judge, I would be thinking, why are people asking me to answer this academic question? Once the council approves, if you decide to approve the contract, then the contract is valid, at least in my mind. Because either E-Web had the authority to do it, or the council had the authority to do it. And since you both did it, that one way or the other resolves the authority question. The interveners have raised a couple other issues, and so I think their position would probably be, no, the judge can still decide. But I think even if the judge said, okay, I'll still decide those other issues, the judge would not be deciding the charter question, because he wouldn't need to decide that question. So in my opinion, if you want charter question decided, you should not approve the water sale at this time. You can always come back after the judge declares whether you have the authority or E-Web has the authority to decide whether the sale should go forward then. If you act tonight, I think you significantly diminish the chances that the court will decide the charter question.
If we then didn't have the court do it, is what you're saying, that you're not as confident that the authority question could be resolved effectively without the court? Or is there some other mechanism the authority question could be resolved by?
The authority question can only be resolved two ways. It's either resolved by the court, or you send something out to the voters and ask them to clarify. There's no other way to resolve it, since it deals with the charter. Either the court clarifies it, or the voters clarify it.
Okay. That, I really appreciate the answer, and now I understand more fully the City Manager's recommendation, because I, as I said at the last meeting, don't want to hang Veneta if we don't have to. I would prefer to get that resolved, so they have some certainty around what their future is. But what I'm hearing you say is, the order in which you need to do things for our interests is, you really need to resolve the court issue, then deal with the sale. Even if I would like to get certainty for Veneta, it's really not as effective a way of dealing with the authority question.
Correct.
Okay. That really was the key question for me in terms of which one of these options I was most comfortable with. Okay, thank you.
George Poling?
Well, I think even if we were to go ahead and approve or disapprove the water sale and then take it to court, I think it still kind of muddies up the water a little bit. And we need to clarify the issue over the, who has the absolute authority. So if this argument comes up some of the time, we can always refer back to case decision back in 2010.
Okay.
So, you know, I appreciate, John, you coming forward with the proposal that you did. I think it's just, it's just a common sense approach to this whole issue. You know, let's deal with the authority question first, and then we'll figure out the rest later. And, you know, if we were to go ahead and grant the sale of the water and then go in, well, you know, then what happens if something doesn't, they come to find out we didn't have the authority? Or then we're still leaving Veneta out there, hanging Veneta out there. So I think this way, we're going to get a certain answer one way or the other. It may take a little bit longer, but no longer. And I think it's the clean and the right way to do it. So I'm glad to see the City Manager's recommendation, and I'm willing to support it.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too will support the Manager's recommendation. It's parallel to some things I said in the paper and at the last meeting. I think that the water rights themselves belong to Eugene. And subsequently, the Eugene Council should be the organization, should be the body that deals with the question of which ones ought to be perfected into the future and should be controlling over the issue of how those are dealt with. I think we owe it to future generations to make sure that we answer this question now while it's before us, so that we have an ability to plan appropriately and to act appropriately as we move in the future. So I'll be happy to support the recommendation and then have the further discussion as to the Veneta question later.
George Brown?
Yeah, I think that this is the correct way to go. We have to intervene in this. We just have to get this question cleared up once and for all, because this is just, this Veneta thing is just the tip of the iceberg. As we go down the road, there are other cities that may be applying for our water, too. I mean, we've heard that Coburg has expressed interest, Junction City, who've been, Roswell. I mean, you know, so we've got to get the authority situation all cleared up. And to me, it is clear already, but hopefully a judge will see it the way we see it, and let the authority rest with the council, because it's pretty clear in the charter. But I think we have to do that first, then we can discuss, do we want to sell water to Veneta or anybody else? Do we want to become the regional water suppliers? This subject came up in the '60s. There's going to be a lot of people that say, yeah, we should do that. There's going to be people that say, no, we shouldn't do that. And they're going to, you know, is it sustainable? Is it contributing to sprawl? But kind of like sprawl by proxy. So if let the other little towns sprawl, we'll supply them the water, we'll keep our... I mean, there's all different kinds of scenarios that can develop from this thing. It's really a deep and complex subject, and I think we need a lot more time to talk about it, rather than just whatever it's been, four, five, six, eight. We need, maybe talk about it in the Envision Eugene, somebody's one. We need, maybe talk about it in the Envision Eugene, some of the fun that, you know, it's like really, it's going to determine the capability for the seven, you know, the valley, so I think we need to intervene, and then we can have the other discussions later. Thank you.
Andrea?
Well, I have a couple of, I like what everybody's saying at the table, I feel comfortable with the direction in which we're going, but it's kind of a moot point if Venida doesn't have their funding, so that's why I'm kind of glad to get this other part of it taken care of, you know, who has the authority. The other question, I keep hearing comments about sprawl and about growth outside the urban growth boundary, can we really be, Glenn, just kind of a question for you, do we really have the authority to make those kind of decisions based on what other cities may or may not want to do?
If the council has the authority under the charter to authorize or not authorize E-Web to wholesale water-
Okay.
-then you can authorize or not authorize for any reason whatsoever.
Okay.
It's not, here are the criteria that you have to use. If you don't have that authority, and the E-Web board has that authority, then the only say you have with respect to how other cities grow is the same authority that any other city has with respect to how Eugene grows. If they don't like what you're proposing to do in Envision Eugene, they can become an interested party and say you haven't followed state law and appeal it up to Luba or the state agency.
Okay. So, you know, because that's what's coming into the conversation, and I'm, I just, you know, I think we've done really good on our JEO, that we're working on relationships within our own intergovernmental relationships, and I really am glad that we're there, it's taken us a long time to get there. I don't want us to be viewed as trying to tell other communities what they can or cannot do, and I just wanted to get that out on the table. I mean, I think we should have that conversation if we want to, but I don't think we should be continual, I mean, that shouldn't be part of the conversation, in my personal opinion, I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Alan?
I appreciate the city manager's recommendation and support it, support us clarifying the authority question, and I agree with most everybody else that said, it's pretty clear to me that the provision of water outside the urban growth boundary requires council approval, but I guess a court will decide that. And it also might be a moot point, the project was multi-millions of dollars, I think 16 million, 17 million in that ballpark, and they got 2.6 million.
They received a funding package that included 2.6 million dollars in grants and 13 million dollars in loans, and they have to tell Rural Development Service by the 13th of July what their decision is to funding package.
Who's the loan from?
Rural Development, the federal government.
So they have to borrow 13 million dollars to fund this, so-
It's the package, yeah.
-to do that, versus other options that they have. And I understand the water rights issues, we've all had our crash course on water rights, and now we're all capable of being water rights attorneys, right?
No, not at all. As much as anyone else.
What was the year that we created water law in the West, 1860?
The first time somebody sucked water out of a body of water, yes, that was the first, really, that was the first appropriation, some of the water rights date back hundred, a couple hundred years, so.
Yeah, and there's still the same rules.
Mm-hmm.
And I agree with Mike that it's the city's water right, we hold it with E-Web, and perfecting that right does, I think, require probably more Venida-type transactions, so clarifying this issue is not a moot point. I don't see this as trying to tell Venida what to do. Venida can do as they please, they have their own urban growth boundary, they have their own systems and setup, and they have every right to do whatever they want within their urban growth boundary. Where the question is, for me, is this is an action that the city of Eugene is going to take, and is the action that we're taking one that is based on the principles that we have set forth about how we want to make decisions, including that group of policies right behind me here, which is the growth management policies? And we should either abide by those or take it off the wall. As far as I'm concerned, this, a sale to Venida or any other body, for that matter, violates at least four of these principles, 1, 2, 5, and 10, and as well as we heard from some sustainability issues that have come up, that it's about sprawl versus compact urban growth. The reason we have land use rules and the reason we have urban growth boundaries is to provide proficient and efficient urban services, and this seems to violate that, violate that premise by putting a line out to Venida, that's our provision of our services. And so I'm still unconvinced that this is a right decision to make, but that's not the decision for us tonight, but as far as the, I'll be in supportive of the motion to move this forward to get clarified in court.
Vetti?
Thank you. I also will support the motion, and I also think it would be wrong to, I do think we have the right to decide, I think it would be wrong to take this action. I found the arguments extremely convincing against selling the water to Venida.
Go ahead, Mayor. So, I have one question, and Chris has something else he wants to say. So what, if the authority issue, let's just say there was the authority to, that E-Web did have the authority, what role would the Board of County Commissioners have in a line going out to Venida?
It would depend on whether there are any metro plan changes, or rural comp plan changes, or county permits that Venida would need, and I'm not sure if somebody needs, for example, a right-of-way permit, do they get that administratively at the county, or do the county commissioners have a role to play in that in the city of Eugene? It's all done administratively, but other jurisdictions might do it differently. I don't know what land use issues are for putting the pipeline in, if it would be inconsistent with, for example, the rural comprehensive plan, sort of the equivalent of our metro plan, that would go to the county commissioners. If there are no land use issues, if permits are done administratively, then I'm not sure if there would be any role for the county board to play, but I really don't know.
Well, if there's any information you can, as we look forward and think about this, that you can get first about that, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, Mayor. They did have this scheduled as an agenda item, but as of Friday, they had removed it from their agenda. I'm checking to see whether or not they're adding it back.
I heard that and I wondered, okay, thank you for that. Chris, and then you.
Yeah, it's clear by the discussion that there are certainly enough votes and enough interest in supporting the city manager's proposal, so that's obviously where it's going to go, and I can support that as well as an alternative to where I might have thought originally to go, but it still, though, leaves the open question about Venida at some point down the road. And I guess I just wanted to offer up my perspective that the reason to sell water or not sell water to Venida gets into that giant black hole around, you know, your intent. Why would you sell water to Venida or not sell water to Venida? And I think that's a discussion that will be important to have, but I see my role as a city councillor for the city of Eugene as someone who assesses and protects the interests of the city of Eugene, not Lane County. And if the sale of water to Venida represents a risk or a detriment to the city of Eugene, then that's a legitimate reason why not to sell. If the reason not to sell water to Venida is that we don't want them to grow, or we don't want them to do something, that's not my authority as a city councillor. If the sale of water puts us at risk, that's something to deliberate on, but not that we want to control what another community does. And I realize there's different perspectives about that issue at the table, but I know that local control has been an important issue for us in the legislature. Every city deserves local control, and so the question is, well, we get to control the sale of water, that gets back to my original, why would we control the sale of water one way or the other? To me, we have to be very cautious and careful and thoughtful about the why when we get to that point. What is the why for why we would or would not approve the sale? And so wherever the discussion goes, that's what's going to be important to me.
George Brown?
Yeah, I just have a question. I have a feeling that the majority of council will support the intervention in a minute or two, and if we do, my question is, I know there are other parties that have intervened, and will they continue their intervention, or will they go, aha, the city's going to take this over and we'll just pull back? Or will everyone, will be a big free throw in the courtroom?
I can speculate, or with your indulgence, I can ask the attorney who represents them to comment. You comfortable commenting on that?
Yeah, I have no idea, so we will participate in briefing, I'm sure.
Okay.
I agree, I'm sorry, Jan Wilson for the petitioners, Jan Wilson for the petitioners, I think that, or the interveners.
Position.
Or I was talking to a petitioner, just kind of.
Can I ask her a question?
I would say that we will participate, we're not going to just let the city go ahead and take care of it, it's on your dime or whatever, we've gotten into this and we intend to stay in it, but I think it's really important to notice what, you know, what E-Web board member, John Brown, said in the paper, in the article today, that this isn't an adversarial position, there's really parties, there's a size, so it's really a matter of everybody bringing forth their arguments and the court looking at them all equally, and so we intend to participate to the extent that our participation would add clarity and be helpful to the court in resolving the issue. It's not anti-Venida or anti-Eugene Stansfield.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm assuming I regarded that right. I'm not sure whether I would approve or disapprove of the water sale to Venida, I really haven't made up my mind, but I see compelling arguments both ways. So, yeah, and I certainly feel the same about E-Web. Start hating E-Web all of a sudden. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I have Mike, and then Alan.
Yeah, I look at this question, I think, as Chris laid out in kind of three parts, and I see us dealing with part number one tonight, and looking forward to the conversation for parts two and three at a future point, and one of those, and to kind of separate out the, perfecting the water rights from the Venida question, I would say that my point of view is that as a Eugene councillor, I kind of have a duty to protect the largest amount of potential rights for future residents of Eugene, in other words, that we don't know the amount of water that some future generation will need, and we don't know how much will or won't be available in the river. And thus, protecting the greatest possible right for those future residents of Eugene seems a wise course to me. As it goes to the sale of Venida question, and as a part of that, I'd like some specific analysis from staff when we get to that point. I've heard a lot of these arguments that perhaps somehow, selling this water to Venida is in some way in conflict with our growth management policies, or in some way perhaps unsustainable, where I would, I could easily see the argument in exactly the opposite direction, that if we were to allow Venida to grow of its own accord, perhaps they may have an increase in jobs and industry there, which means a lot fewer people would be driving from Venida to Eugene. Perhaps if we're doing, if we were to not sell the water to Venida and they were able to acquire the right of their own bush in some other capacity, and then would need to build some other entire facility for withdrawing the water from the river, then we'd have two of them instead of one, and that wouldn't be very sustainable either. So I'm hoping that when we get to the point where we have this discussion, that we look at some good signs and good data for what truly is and isn't a wise way to proceed, instead of kind of just the hyperbole around where we would normally have this discussion.
Alan?
So, there's two sides to every coin, and we make decisions all the time that impact other people's decisions, and we don't base it on what their decisions are, what they're going to do. It is legitimate for us to assess an action that we're taking based on our principles and our policies and make sure that they're consistent, and if they're inconsistent, we should reject that decision. And every action we take has an economic, an environmental, and a social aspect to it, and we call that the triple bottom line, and we should assess each one of those triple bottom line aspects and their impacts on our community, and that's why I asked for the triple bottom line tool assessment, which I hope we'll get when we have the conversation later. So, it's not about telling Venida about what to do, it's about our action and what is the implication of our action, as opposed to telling Venida that they should constrain their urban growth boundary, or shrink it, or expand it, or anything. Have any authority do that, nor should we have anything to say about that, because we're the city of Eugene, so it's our action that is a concern to me.
And I'm actually hoping, and I think we're working at this in a number of places, that we can have the kind of discussion you're talking about in a way that doesn't presume we understand anybody else's intention, or know that they have some kind of nefarious purpose, or something of that sort. It's really, you can look at things in many different ways. When I've looked at this, I've said, do we really know the difference between the environmental and triple bottom line impact of the sale of water versus them having to take water out of their own groundwater supply, which affects the nearby rivers? And so there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of stuff that we have to kind of do this about, and what I really would hate is for Venida to think that this had something to do with being, disregarding their authority over their own community, or any kind of disrespect to their community at all. I'm like you, I go over to Venida and I like it, so I go out to Fern Ridge, and so I just don't want it to be that kind of conversation. We all, Venida and us, we all have some kind of responsibility about regional planning, and so we all have the responsibility of trying to figure these things out the best way we can, and to try to have that discussion in a way that suits us all as people who are policymakers for our communities. It's not, in my view, it's not just about Eugene either, it is a regional, and even state responsibility for how we're going to manage these kinds of discussions about how we're going to grow, and how they're going to grow, and how we're all going to try to do the best of decision-making we can for the future of our area. You want to put it on the table?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I move to direct the city manager to intervene in the validation proceeding and argue that the city charter grants to the council, rather than E-Web, the authority to decide to sell water outside the city's limits.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes, and with that, we are finished with the business of the work session. Unless anybody else has anything to offer? Okay, 7:30, we'll get back together.